Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Chamber's Government Affairs Forum, featuring our most recently elected Boston City Councilors. I'm Jim Rooney, President and CEO of the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce, and I'm really thrilled to welcome our newest Boston City Councilors and to have a conversation about the issues that matter most to the city and to the business community and all of you. Before we speak to our councilors, I want to give a special welcome to all of the past and present-elected officials that are here with us today. I also want to leave you with a little bit of a commercial message. We do have a few upcoming Chamber events. Tomorrow, in fact, tune in virtually for the final installment in the Racial Wealth Gap series, Wealth Building Now and Tomorrow. This has been a terrific and well-attended series focusing on Boston's wealth gap, and we hope you'll decide to join us for the concluding event. In our November 2nd, we will host our last Government Affairs Forum of 2022, featuring Congressman Richard Neal. It's before the election, so he still will be Chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, and of course, we hope that that continues. You can register for all of these events at bostonchamber.com. We're almost ready to begin, to introduce and have our speakers and have a conversation, but before I do, I do want to thank our longtime sponsors of this Government Affairs Forum, Bank of America, for not only their generosity in sponsoring this event, but all of what they do to make this city such a great place. Now, I'd like to introduce our special guests. I'll start with welcoming City Councilor Brian Worrell, a native Bostonian and small business owner. Councilor Worrell represents District 4, and as a small business owner, Councilor Worrell's experience inspired his run for City Council. Next, I'd like to welcome Councilor Gabriela Coletta. Councilor Coletta previously served as Chief of Staff to then-Boston City Councilor Lydia Edwards, and led strategic community partnerships at The Aquarium. Now, Councilor Coletta represents District 1. Now, I'd like to welcome Councilor-at-Large Ruthie Louiegan. Councilor Louiegan was born and raised in Mattapan in Hyde Park, and she's a lawyer who successfully served many clients in Boston Housing Court. In her position as City Councilor-at-Large, Councilor Louiegan is leading homeownership efforts, school funding, and more. And welcomes Councilor-at-Large Erin Murphy. Previously, Councilor Murphy was a Boston public school teacher for 22 years. As a teacher, Councilor Murphy saw the educational and economic challenges that students and families are navigating, and she's working to dismantle those barriers. We did invite, and she accepted, Councilor Kendra Lara, but she's failing a little bit under the weather today, so she won't be joining us. So with that, why don't we give our councilors a warm welcome, and we'll begin the session. [applause] You're all fairly new in the position of Boston City Council. When I met some of you on the way in, I said, "So how you liking it so far?" But I'd like to get a sense of the issues that your constituents face. You, as a City Councilor, are on the front lines, out in the neighborhoods, talking to people. What issues are the constituents facing here in the city of Boston, and how does that shape your vision for the job?
Thanks for having us, Jim. Honored to be here. And for me, it's always staying grounded in the community, being at the civic associations, continuing to be out there to hear from our community on what issues they are having at that moment. And some of the top priorities are still, you know, housing, safety, also education as well. And what we're doing as an office and as a team is working with our business partners and city departments in order to bring, you know, resources to our communities to help fight those issues that our constituents are facing. But it's always staying grounded in the community to making sure that we're listening firsthand from them to understand the issues. But it's housing, education, and still safety in our neighborhoods.
Counselor?
Thank you so much for having us here today, Jim, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I know everybody has busy lives. But for me, very similar to Councilor Worrell, I grew up in my district. I grew up in East Boston, so I have a deep understanding and deep love and commitment to this district. My district in particular is comprised of or made up of working-class folks. They get up every day and work to provide for their families and put food on the table for their families with integrity, and then they turn back around with the limited resources and time that they have to fight for our community. So I just, I want to give them a shout-out and let them know that a lot of my ideas and a lot of what I'm pushing in the council comes directly from them. But what we're seeing in my district in particular, beyond the usual inconveniences of living in city government, which is traffic, trash, you know, the growing pains of a growing city, the larger issues are displacement due to two different reasons. Displacement due to gentrification. East Boston in particular is growing to accommodate the workforce that's coming into Boston, and that is pushing out generations of folks that have lived in UC for many, many years, and that crosses ethnic and racial lines. Displacement due to flooding, coastal flooding and storm surge is very real, and it happens regularly. So that's something that I'm thinking about, and I believe that we'll get into in just a little bit. But of course, I hear from families about the quality of education and pathways to post-collegiate or post-education areas for kids. So those are all things that I'm thinking about and pushing, and I am getting a lot of, like I said, my ideas from the community on how to combat them at the end of the day.
Counselor Louiegan.
Thank you, Jim, and again, thank you, everyone, for giving us your time this morning and being here. I want to echo the comments of my district councilors. A lot of this work, as an at-large City Councilor, is really working in deep partnership with district councilors to address the needs of our residents on big issues like climate justice and climate change, on issues like homeownership, on education issues throughout our schools. As a Mattapan and Hyde Park native, we spend a lot of our time working on the big issues like education, like making sure that our schools and our school buildings affirm the dignity of each and every one of our children. But it's also about getting everything right and responding to constituent services. My office has been working really hard on dumpster cleanups in our neighborhoods, especially in Black and Brown neighborhoods, where oftentimes our 301 requests are neglected or aren't listened to. And so really showing that government, our office, can be one that responds to the needs of everyday constituents. When we talk about our housing crisis, we're talking about both in the rental market and in the housing market. So an order, a hearing order that I filed for tomorrow is about how do we make sure that banks are really living up to their obligations on the Community Reinvestment Act and thinking about how we make homeownership more of a reality for families, working-class families, who are leaving Boston at record pace because they can't afford to live here and because they want to invest in homeownership here. So it's about these really big issues that are the issues we hear about every day on the news and from our constituents. And really, as I think as Councilor Worrell said and as Councilor Coletta also highlighted, it's really about listening to community and making sure that what we're working on is really responding to what we're hearing on the ground every day from our residents.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you all for being here. I'm Erin Murphy. I'm one of your at-large councilors. I was born and raised in Dorchester and represent the whole city, and as you said, former school teacher. So when you're a Boston public school teacher, you get to meet a lot of children, families, grandparents, caregivers, and understand that. I always knew as a mom, too, raising my kids here in the city, that many families feel that City Hall isn't always accessible or easy to navigate. And one of the reasons I ran was to make sure that I could be a voice for many people in the city who often feel like, you know, we have a lot of resources, we have a lot to offer, but many people feel the quality of life, day-to-day living, isn't really working for them. So my office definitely works closely with our district councilors. You know, as an at-large council, you represent every neighborhood, the whole city, 700,000 residents, but I quickly realized also, you also represent all of the thousands and thousands of business workers who come into the city, you know, that come in on the expressway, who work here, that are downtown, and they bring life to our city, right? They support the small businesses. We saw that in downtown. Many of the businesses, like the sandwich shops when COVID hit, that they were struggling. So making sure we're supporting the businesses, we're supporting, you know, quality of life issues. I'm the Chair of Public Health. I've filed a lot of hearings and have done a lot of work around mental health and recovery, making sure that our neighbors, we know that this is a struggle for families all across the city, and making sure we're addressing the crisis at Mass and Cast, but also addressing supports for neighborhoods across the city, and also the Chair of Veteran Services. So really deep into constituent services and making sure that when people call, maybe it's about a school bus didn't come and pick them up, or maybe it's we need a tree planted in the park, or something as big as we just had a fire, or we just got evicted, what do we need to do? So one of the things I did when I first got there is went around and just introduced myself to everyone in the departments at City Hall, because coming from a school, I know how to be a teacher, I know how to navigate BPS, but I did not know how to navigate City Hall. So definitely just introducing myself to transportation, to public works, to all the different departments, so then when constituents were calling, our office was able to give them good service and making sure that we were looping in and checking in always with our district councilors that we're working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, we're welcome, and we're talking about what you're hearing from your constituents' issues and how that's shaping your approach to the job.
Oh, thank you. Wow. So I should have actually just a little bit of sache, because when you're fashionably late, that's what... That's what you do.
She's also a dressmaker, and she made, she's incredibly talented. Four of our City Council colleagues walked in a fashion show, and she designed all our dresses in a week. So she is a very talented person. I didn't get one yet.
Soon. I wasn't in charge of the list, I promise you. So my name is Tanya, pronounced Tanya, Fernand Anderson, and I am the District Councilor for District 7. And if anybody, if anyone hears from Roxbury, you understand that we're super territorial. Roxbury in the house? Okay. And that we, you know, we've nurtured this thing from the ground up, right? Like in the '90s or in the '80s, if you were in Roxbury, you understand all of that, the changes and the difficulties and the hurdles that we had to go through. Coming from West Africa, Cape Verde, and adapting to this new home, and I always tell people, "Don't let anybody fool you. Everybody loves the ghetto." And allow me to explain, because it's not, it's not about, it's not really about coming from a neighborhood and travesties and just talking about poverty. It's about that communal type of spiritual connection that you have with each other when you're surviving or when you're persevering difficult times. And so coming with that perspective, as a formerly undocumented person, for 17 years I faced deportation and homelessness and all of these things, right? I believe that these were all stepping stones to give me an amazing opportunity to evolve as a human being. So I actually am extremely thankful for my experiences. So connecting that to constituents, when I hear, you know, from pothole issues to trees or any environmental, and some people want dog parks, and some people, I would love a dog park. I'm thinking about a way to incorporate art in this dog park. But some people obviously need homes. Some people are fighting displacement on all levels: climate displacement, commercial displacement, housing displacement, and how we work through that. So I've strategically thought about the different ways that we can do that. I've collaborated with universities and hopefully institutions, organizations, or companies such as this one, that will reinvest in communities of color to fight displacement on all these levels. There are different policies that I'm working on, but I heard my constituents, but I didn't just hear them after I got elected, right? It's when your door knocking that you're collecting information, that people are crying and, you know, grandmas and aunties and young sisters are crying and telling you that they need something, or that COVID's gotten them depressed, or that she keeps me at the door for two hours crying because she's depressed, but it's okay, because I understand that this experience will eventually prepare me to better respond to my constituents. So I've actually organized all of the civic leaders in District 7. We come together as an advisory council, and we've actually filed for 501(c)(3) to create a trust fund for D7. How do we reimagine Article 80s and 50s and actually get some benefits, community benefits, to go back into the community? How do we work with BPDA and the Mayor's Office to actually slow down the process for Roxbury in particularly, being that poverty is concentrated in Roxbury at a very large rate? We share twice the amount of affordable housing. We share twice the amount of halfway homes, right, as all of the city. So this is astounding when you think about decentralizing services, when you think about building equity and actually having people, opportunities for economic mobility. How do you do that when I, as a Black woman, can't even go outside to walk in the park? Or I, as a Black woman, can't even decompress after my work? Where do I go? Where do the gay Black boys go? It might, I don't know. I know that there's nothing in Roxbury. And so we have to improve quality of life while fighting displacement, while dealing with something as random as someone telling me that, you know, there are little aliens coming through the vent, which is all okay. You just have to hopefully have the bandwidth to organize your staff to, you know, perform optimum constituent service while working on these policies, while collaborating, again, with schools to provide all of these programs that are coming into D7. And I look forward to hopefully cutting the ribbon for the art corridor, and I'll invite you all to it. While we revitalize business corridors and beautify our communities through the arts, please come to Roxbury, visit, because there's money in the budget to actually do walking tours, hopefully not encouraging more gentrification, but still, you're welcome, and I look forward to our conversation today. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So in business, there's a saying that people on the front lines, like salespeople, know most about the customers, and I think in government, in my experience, it's true that city councilors and their offices know much about their constituencies at that level of government. I think that was reflected in your answers. In some way, when you talked about the issues, each of you made reference to collaborating, working with the business community in some form in order to achieve these objectives and the changes. So I'd like to ask, I'd like to go around again, and just, we don't have a lot of time, so the more succinct your answers, the better, so we can get everyone in. But I'd like to go around again and just talk about how you think about the role of the business community and the business community of Boston in addressing the kinds of challenges that you all articulated. Why don't we start with you, Counsel?
Sure. Immediately, I think of it as a partnership. We have to partner with the business community. We have to collaborate with all of you, because ideas are our ideas. Let's work together. Let's sit down at the table. Let's be sure to bring community there to make sure their voice is at the table, and let's figure it out. We're all problem solvers. We are here for a reason, and I think it also comes down to resources. I think government looks to the private market for the resources that we need to do our jobs and to best service our constituents, and we saw that firsthand with the COVID-19 pandemic, when the business community stepped up and you all provided funds for small businesses and went through the, I forget exactly what it was called, but it was the City of Boston Fund. So I do, at the end of the day, I see it as a collaboration and a partnership to problem solve, but to also get additional resources.
Counselor Louiegan.
Yeah. I'll just continue piggybacking off of what Councilor Coletta said. It is a collaboration, especially when we are facing record work shortages in the country and in the city in particular. You know, I'm Haitian-American, the first Haitian person to be elected to Boston City Council, and Boston has the third-largest Haitian diaspora, and we've been seeing an influx for years now of Haitian migrants and refugees from the border, some of whom have been paroled, and once you have parole, you can then have work authorization, a lot of which has been taking an incredibly long time, just proportionally for Black migrants like Haitian migrants and refugees, and that limits their ability to participate in the workforce. And we know that for years, forever, the solution to worker shortages has been this dependency on immigration, both for skilled labor and for unskilled labor and everything in between. And so I think the business community needs to be probably a lot more vocal when it comes to supporting the needs of pressuring USCIS to issue the work authorizations a lot quicker. It's also making sure that we're partnering with the job training programs that exist to ensure that we're preparing people for the jobs that exist. We're talking about, we have this whole new Green New Deal plan for our schools. We're preparing for climate, for climate change, right, which we should have been preparing for so long ago, and how are we making sure that we are preparing our kids? Our kids graduating from Madison Park, our kids graduating from BPS. College is not the route for everyone. How are we making sure that we're preparing them for the jobs that our business community has and are struggling with? When we talk about just the city alone, the city has, I think the number is 2,000, like a lot of vacancies, because I don't want to misspeak, but there's a lot of job vacancies. And if we are, you know, working in tandem with the business community, working in tandem with our immigrant community, a lot of those vacancies could be filled.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. When I think of businesses, too, I think of small businesses, the mom-and-pop shops that really are the vibrant neighborhoods across the city, but then also the big businesses. And we definitely, I'll piggyback on the work shortage. We're seeing that across the country, city halls looking for jobs. We had like pools that needed to shut down this summer because we couldn't hire enough lifeguards. So quality of life issues are really affecting that. And the teacher in me always goes back to that workforce development. And I was advocating for a lot of the Opera funding to go to workforce training and, you know, really making sure that when our kids are leaving, if it's Madison Park, if it's Charlestown High, that they actually have the skills needed to apply for a job and feel that they are able and ready to do the job offered. So we have to do a better job partnering with our schools and then also our unions, which I know are willing and able. We're a union city, and I grew up in a union household, and it's a great job and a great pathway, and we're not connecting people in the right way, so definitely working hard. Our office works a lot with connecting people to trainings, if it's CDL training to get a job as a bus driver, whatever it is. So being that conduit to the different resources out there to make sure that the businesses can stay open and can thrive. I see so many, like I was at a bakery on Center Street in JP, and it was 2 o'clock in the afternoon on a Sunday, and it said, "Closed due to staffing." I know Zoomies and Charlestown, you see it, they close like every other Monday, it seems, because they have to give their staff a day off because they don't have enough workforce. So we definitely also have to look, I know, policy-wise, some of our jobs that always had Boston residency requirement, which I am a big fan of that, but also knowing that to make sure that the city is still running, how do we maybe temporarily ease some of the restrictions for some of our job applications? I know schools are looking at that, too, having to ease some restrictions because we have a teacher shortage, we have a bus driver shortage, so balancing that, but always looking ahead that when we're back on track, let's make sure that our city is able to offer these jobs to our kids.
Counselor.
Thank you. Who here remembers the Boston Miracle? Some of us? I think there's a wonderful opportunity here to really collaborate. We're talking private sectors as well as public with community, right, with ex-gang affiliates or mediation groups or different therapeutic paraprofessionals or professionals to be able to bring together this network of training and accountability. We can also work with banks and different institutions to be able to work with predatory lending or at least to use other tactics of credit line, right? So people are paying rent on time, and how are we doing that, and how are we supporting them with financial literacy or mobility, how to understand to become independent? But we can also do a virtual market trust, which I filed for, and the future is digital, so why not support our mom-and-pop shops to go digital and help them? So imagine competing with Amazon in a virtual market trust, where you have this digital component that's totally free, provided by your city, but also you have the back office of the tech support. So no more, like you can just go online and say, "How do I cross-market? How do I, how do I publicize my website, or how do I brand?" Right? And you get that online, but you also have this trust that you share, and you're competing with Amazon, and this is what we should really be doing for our small businesses. But there are so many other ways. You can partner businesses with small businesses, so bigger Karma's with small business owners in the district, the city, to more philanthropic sort of ideas. You can tell I'm a woman of 1,000 ideas, so I'll stop there, but this stuff excites me, so I look forward to anyone that wants to get involved.
Great. Counselor Worrell.
Yeah, so there's plenty of ways our team has partnered with businesses, some businesses in this room, and one of the ways that we did was to try to fight displacement, and it was through a homeownership voucher program that I sat down with a few lawyers and lending institutions to help combat displacement. And what that is just trying to do is trying to create favorable terms to increase the first-time home buyers' buying power here in the city of Boston in order for them to buy. And also partnering with our developers to create the type of inventory that we need to keep Black and Brown families here in the city of Boston. You know, sometimes when we develop, we don't, we're developing one-bedroom studios, and it's oftentimes rentals. You know, how do we create those homeownership opportunities out of two and three-plus bedrooms with green space? You know, sometimes if we can't get the green space around the development, like let's put it on the roof. Some of the highest temperatures in the city of Boston are in District 4, right? So that's the other way that we can partner, is to make sure that when we're developing, we're taking a look at all the issues and making sure that that is being a product of what we're producing for our communities. And also, I love the idea that we're hearing from my colleagues is, you know, making sure that we're partnering with our schools, right? I floated around this idea on adopt a school. There's such, be so many businesses that adopt a school to be able to, like, to focus in and hone in on working with those seniors and those juniors to give them the internship needed to gain the experience when they're graduating high school. I feel like sometimes as a school system, we set our standards at graduation rates, where we should be setting our standards on careers, your ability to graduate college. I went to Northeastern, and we had the co-op program. Any Huskies in the house? Yeah, right? And it just blows my mind that Boston Public Schools does not have an internship program, because it just proved to work wonders with me. You know, through that internship, I had three, three jobs out of college. And imagine if we equipped our high school students with two or three jobs out of high school, you know, what kind of success that they will be receiving or even extending the school day to make sure that we're setting it up to be prepared to graduate college. So there's plenty of different ways to collaborate, and I'm always open for communication.
So I want to hit a couple of issues more deeply, so I'll direct the questions. I don't want to inhibit others from weighing in, but I do want to respect time as well. So, Counselor Louiegan, you mentioned the immigration issue. Big issue for the chamber, big issue for workforce. I've spent a lot of time in Washington on this issue. Immigration reform, as you know, is a federal issue, but nonetheless, we deal with it on a community basis as well. So go a little deeper for me on how we can collaborate on issues of our immigration situation in Greater Boston and support those that are here in a better way.
Yeah, that's a great question, Jim. And I'll say that, yeah, that immigration is a federal issue, but just because something is a federal issue, at least for me, it hasn't stopped me from speaking out on the issue and thinking about what we can do on the local level, because a lot of these issues intersect. This morning, I was, you know, texting my best friend who works at HUD about a regulation that I think is overly burdensome and what we can do about that. And so I think there are sometimes too many hoops that our immigrant communities have to face. We have foreign workers both here and abroad who have been working, who have been waiting for their work authorization. And so as I said before, a lot, there's a lot of power in this room. There's a lot of power in community, and there's a lot of power in this room, and a lot of it is making sure that we are applying the right pressure. It is unfortunate where we are as a country in terms of our inability to really speak about immigration as a justice issue, as a labor issue, that we all need, that we need in all of our systems in order to be successful as a country, and the idea that we are a country of immigrants. And our inability to even have marginal immigration reform hurts our bottom dollar if you don't want to make the moral argument for why we need to reform it, think from the economic perspective. And so, you know, I think there are a lot of, a lot of ways that the city tries to make sure that we get job training for immigrant communities. Part of the linkage fee that commercial developers pay, the majority of that is for housing development and goes into a neighborhood housing trust, but there's a small percentage of that that goes into the job training trust that allows us to partner with community-based organizations to prepare folks, a lot of immigrants, to further workforce. And I think that's the sort of work that we need to do. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of the times, this morning, I was, I was talking to some, I was talking to Irving and folks at Rice Construction about how our office has really connected people to different industries, young people to opportunities, and like that is really what I'm finding in like my 10 months of being a city councilor, like the biggest, there's an information gap, and there's that gap that I, my office is playing a lot of stuff to play, to like just do that connection, that connective tissue, and we got to figure out how to be better at that. I know that's not I know that's not an answer, but like a lot of it is about, there's population here that's need jobs and that there are all these jobs over here. How do we bring the groups closer together? I mean, I think there are a lot of people in this room who are thinking about that and who can collaborate to make that happen.
Thank you. Anyone want to weigh in on that before I move on? I have to ask the former teacher of education question. I couldn't let you go. So, you know, 20 years you spent in the system. Describe the challenges that the system faces, but also what you're hearing from your constituencies and, you know, what's the path forward?
There's lots of challenges, yes. And I know we were speaking briefly before we started. And I do have to say, I didn't go to Northeastern, I went to UMass Boston, but we have a co-op right now. Joe in our office is doing his third senior co-op and is amazing, so. And also, one of the things I think is missing in BPS and used to be there is there's a lot of attention to Madison Park not fulfilling their dream and there's only this expectation that we lean on or reach out to our labor unions. And there's so many businesses in this room and I'm not sure if anyone works with or is knows about Crystal Ray, which is a wonderful model. It's a private high school in Savin Hill, but they start as freshmen doing co-ops in businesses, right? So knowing that our students at all high schools, at all levels, need to have that understanding and that work ethic and also, you know, just getting up and one day going into the office, some days being at school, but that flexibility to know and start to think about what you want to do with your life. I know that as a parent living here in the city and as a teacher, nobody ever, I don't know any parent or student ever saying, "I want to be an electrician" or "I want to be a plumber, so I'm going to go to Madison Park High." That's never been something that they thought was their path to get there. They went to CM or they went somewhere else and then joined the union. So we definitely have to do a better job at not just teaching kids, I always taught younger kids in silos, that we have to start at a young age. We also, what I hear mostly from constituents is there is not enough seats at the schools they want their child at, that there's safety concerns. We've been hearing a lot about bullying and other things. The DESI report came out that showed that we really have to do a better job at teaching our kids how to read, that each school is not a quality school, the data shows it, so we have to just address it. One thing that we're seeing, and we've had lots of meetings and I've worked and co-sponsored with Counselor Worell on the Cradle to Career, and when we talk about the data, BPS likes to hold on to their data, they don't like to share it. And I always say, even if it's bad, I always thought as a mom, like even if you have to tell me something bad, we can't work through it unless I know what we need to help to fix it. So we have to get better at letting the different departments, especially BPS, share what they need or at least share, even if it doesn't look good, so that we can, we have a huge budget. I always say, we don't need to keep throwing money at our school system, we need to really manage it differently. There is hope. We have a new superintendent, we're hopefully going to be more transparent. And I do believe that all of my colleagues on the council want to work with BPS to get it to the place it can be. I always said, it's not fair that certain families or kids get that golden ticket and they get the school, but then your neighbor doesn't get the school and we lose a lot of families. I bet there's parents out there who left the city. You moved because your kid didn't get into a school that you may have lived across from and was a great school and you couldn't afford it, didn't want to juggle private school tuition. So there's a lot to talk about. I could talk for days about the BPS system. My daughter is in her second year teaching now, so as I left last year to be a city councilor, she started in BPS, so I know there's still hope. We're going to advocate and always, you know, make sure that all of our kids get a quality education and it ties right into what all of you do. I know many businesses say they give kids a chance, but it's sad to see that a lot of times, some of the BPS kids that go to these internships aren't ready. We didn't give them the skills they needed and that's our fault as a city, that's not their fault, so we have to do better.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, this is a business audience, so we like talking finances. So a city finances question, as Chair of Ways and Means, you had the thrill of creating your first budget. And I've always said that if you want to learn about an organization, public or private, do a budget and you'll learn a lot about that organization. New system, tell us some of the things you learned and some of the benefits that you experienced because of this new process.
Such an underestimated statement, Jim. Thank you. You have no idea. I, you know, most of it, I think, you know, municipal budgets is not like a nonprofit budget, right? So first of all, like learning how a municipal government budget works or finances work. And then second, understanding where the hidden money is. That's always interesting. And also, understanding that, and I say, and I say, I'm going to be candid with you because I do a really good job trying as much as possible to be. I don't judge a person in their position or I try not to. I try to reserve to allow them their process, their growth. And so I couldn't say that I'm brave in comparison to what Michelle Wu is doing because I'm not in her shoes and I don't know what it's like to be brave in her shoes. So what I would say is while navigating this new task, she had a budget from last year or from her predecessors and now has to carry out certain capital investments, now has to obliged by certain policies and programming and cabinets that are in place already and some that she created. I would say that the lack of transparency or the transparency that question one tried to, the amendment on the charter tried to create is going to be a long process. We are not there yet. And I would say that while we try to be graceful with the process and with each other, we also owe it to the public to be super transparent about what's happening with the money. I would say that the capital projects and investments have been severely systemically racist. And so when you come in as a black woman, first black woman, share ways and means and you get announced like that and it's, you know, it's patronizing and it's weird, right? Because you're like, so? But it's a thing that you, a responsibility that you have to carry out. And so you try to do the best that you can and then you realize that you're working with this beast, this thing that disenfranchises black communities and invest highly in affluent communities. And so you do the best that you can in a diplomatic way or with our democracy. I try to share some of that leverage that I now carry, right? You must invest in Mattapan, you must talk to Counselor Worell, you must talk to Counselor Liu Zhen, you must talk to Counselor Coletta. Counselor Murphy wants something for the kids, a youth center. I remember you talked a lot about the health center. And so you have to leverage some of this and all of it, all of that what it seems it's not. And so then there's all of these hidden backdoor deals that takes place as well. I hope that we can get to a place where we can be super transparent. And again, we can't judge anyone in their position. She is doing the best that she can with what she has at the moment as a woman, as a woman of color coming in new, right? So be patient with me and allow the process. And while we do that, we forgive each other and hopefully we grow and we do a better job tomorrow.
Counselor Worell, I have to ask you a small business question. So, you know, the chamber's a mix of large businesses that you, we all know their brands, but small business is a backbone and a job creator, not just in the sort of retail, but also in the entrepreneurial area, supporting some of our major industries, be it life sciences or technology. You called a hearing to discuss barriers to starting a small business in the city and I'd be interested in what you intuitively expected, but also what you learned about some of those barriers to starting a small business. And back to our collaboration question, you know, how can the business community help with that?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we held a hearing on barriers to business. Let me back up a little. I am a small business owner and also the Chair of Small Business on a City Council. And when I first started, you know, one of my many small businesses, I just understood the challenges and how complex it is to start a business here in the city of Boston. There's no one-stop-shop, you know, there's no website that just walks you through, you know, what you need from A to Z, what it's going to cost, you know, from A to Z to open the doors of a restaurant or, you know, all the permanent. And the Institute of Justice created a report that compared 20 cities across the country, Boston, San Francisco, Philadelphia, just to name a few. And what that report highlighted is that Boston has some of the most complex steps in the, amongst those 20 large cities, right? There's like 92 steps to open up a restaurant. And just in terms of like permanent and fees, I believe it was like close to like $5,000 just for permanent fees. So how do we cut those costs? How do we take a look at the steps that these businesses are going through and to see, to identify any redundancy, to make sure that that process is being streamlined? Also financial, as a small business owner of color, it's hard to obtain, you know, initial seed money or even a loan in order to get off the ground. So how can we partner with lending institutions to create more favorable terms or angel investors to get our ideas off the ground as well? And then also just having, like I said, a one-stop-shop that where you could track, you know, your permits, your license. And then what we also did was introduce a home rule petition to get more liquor license inside of our neighborhoods in Dorchester, Mattapan, Roxbury, and now this conversation to have it more in East Boston. But it's those neighborhoods where we don't have sit-down restaurants that add to the vibrancy and economics to our neighborhood. So that's what we're looking to do and continue to do as a city.
Can we tell them how many black businesses have full liquor licenses in Boston?
In Boston? I think it's under 10. Under 10? Yeah, I think it's under 10.
Actually, do they own liquor licenses? I think there are three or four. And then it's different when you compare those who have neighborhood-based restricted licenses and those who have the market-based licenses. The number is, it's embarrassing.
It is.
It's all of people of color. And then how many for over 1,500?
Yeah, overall.
Yeah, like on a main drag like Blue Hill Lab on my side, it's probably one or two liquor licenses on Blue Hill Lab.
And neither of them are the market-based. All of them are based, all of them are in Blue Hill Lab. The few that there are are liquor licenses that are neighborhood restricted licenses.
Absolutely.
All right. So Counselor Coletta, you're in District 1, includes miles of waterfront. You've been an advocate for a resilient waterfront. In fact, you've spoken eloquently about planning as a key to the successful future of Boston, particularly as we, you know, experience climate change and so forth. Talk a little bit about that, but just to put a wrinkle on it. To what degree are the efforts around climate change and a resilient waterfront, to what degree is the retention with development in that effort?
Yeah, and thank you for this question. It's an important one and it's something that I'm deeply passionate about. And much like my colleagues, I derive a lot of my passions from the personal. I grew up waterfront-adjacent in East Boston, but yet I could never get there. It was walled off, it was fenced off by mass port, by private industries. And even at a young age, I remember seeing the potential of this precious natural environmental treasure that we have. And as we have allocated government resources, private resources to clean it up, it has become desirable. And so the waterfront of today is not the waterfront of yesterday. And I think it is a good thing, but there are some unintended consequences. And we talk about, I'll get to resiliency in just a quick second, but just talking about accessibility. I now have the ability to walk to my waterfront and enjoy it for all of its beauty and the vistas, but it seems like it is a walled-off gated community because there are luxury condos that are there that feel like they were not built for me or kids that I grew up in, grew up with. And so for me, I am actively thinking about planning, when I talk about planning with the BPDA, and I just had a hearing on this with Chief Jamison and Chief Mariama White-Hammond, who's the Chief of Environment, Energy and Open Space, we were talking about planning for the inclusion of everybody. I think there is a missed opportunity in the seaport and I think it's common knowledge here that the seaport did not plan for everybody to live there or to be there or to thrive there, to be welcomed there. And so this is something that I am thinking about as this precious and finite resource because we only have certain miles of waterfront. How can we provide not just accessibility, but as it is being commodified, how do we build generational wealth in the community? And for me, as we continue this conversation, I want to see actual affordable homeownership opportunities for folks. I want to see affordable commercial business space that folks can enjoy. There's a couple of businesses that have come to East Boston whose whole business model is centered around the view. And they have a monopoly right now over that market. So I would like to get lifelong first-generation immigrant business owners to have space at the waterfront. But how do we do that, right? We need to make sure that there is affordable commercial space there. And of course, park space, open space, green space that we could all be beneficiaries of, that we could own at one point in time. But all this, everything that I'm saying is all for naught if we don't actively plan to fortify our coastline, to make a more resilient community and protect the resiliency of our people, right? I think it's 45% of our critical infrastructure will be underwater if we don't produce these strategies to be able to take in water. Places like Rotterdam and Amsterdam have already done this. They're thinking about this and looking towards the future. Boston is behind on this. And I am pushing the conversation through hearing orders, you know, through talking with the mayor and state agencies for all of us to be aligned. And this is my appeal to the business community. One thing that came out of the hearing with Chief Jamison and Chief Mariama White-Hammond is that we really need collaboration on this. I had said that this is our next big dig. And it is bold to say that and that's not lost on me, but there is an economic argument to this as well. And I think knowing my room and knowing my audience, for every square foot that becomes flooded, it's $4 that we have to put back into our infrastructure. And that's not good for any of us. That's not good for our housing market, that's not good for our commercial real estate. So I am pushing this conversation forward in development conversations with individual parcels and builders to actively think about this and plan, not only for the inclusion of folks, but to plan for the resiliency of our coastline and our people.
Thank you. And not surprisingly, our time has gone by very quickly, so I'll ask one more question that I'd ask each of you to address. Yeah, right? So the chamber surveyed its members in a very extensive survey last year. And the number one issue that was raised, not surprisingly, was workforce and talent with a D E and I lens, making sure that we have the workforce that we want to satisfy the needs of our 21st century economy. So that raises the issue of attracting and retaining talent in Boston. As you think about that issue, what are some of the headwinds? What are some of the challenges to making sure that people want to come and stay in Boston and meet our workforce needs? Counselor, will you kick us off and then we'll come down? No, Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
One of the challenges of people who want to come and stay in Boston?
Yes.
That too many people are coming, you know?
That's traumatic.
I mean, you know, I was on my way here, I was thinking about in terms of gentrification and all of the wonderful people that we now have, this rich resources of, you know, liberals, Democrats and yes, Republicans too. We're all a family. And just how the housing market is completely inflated and hopefully, never mind, I won't say that in public. But I think that it's really the housing cost, right? Like how are we surviving paying our rent or mortgage and making time to be able to manage that training, that going back to school or whatever, running a business? How are you doing that while you are paying and surviving and taking care of your family? Or if you're single and you're alone, I think the biggest challenge obviously is the cost.
Sure. I was thinking about what Counselor Coletta said and when she looks at the high-rises in East Boston and feels like they weren't built for her and she grew up there. A lot of our students and our young adults who are about to enter the workforce, look at these jobs that are popping up around the city and they definitely don't feel like they're for them or feel that they could see themselves in. they're for them, or feel that they could see themselves in one of those jobs. And we are approving thousands and thousands of square feet of life science buildings all the time now. And we often say that most of our kids here in the city are only qualified probably to be the secretary. Like, why are we not making sure that we're training our students, like, they're the next generation, to see themselves in these jobs that are there and that you as business owners want good talent? And I know I touched on it on my last question about workforce development, but not pigeonholing people. Like, I was a schoolteacher, so I worked, I drove to school for 20-something years. I ate my lunch in my classroom at 10:42 every day. When I came to City Hall on December 1st, I'm still kind of in shock. I'm like, who are all these people? Where do they go to work? Like, I've never worked downtown. I've never come to work where you see hundreds of people walking in different directions. And it started to make me realize, like, oh, you can go to school or you can be trained to have so many different jobs. So I do think we have to do a better job at not just having, like, a career day where you can be a cop, you can be a teacher, you can be a nurse, that there's so many different jobs out there. And I think our students would be, our children would be happier too, right? Your workforce needs to be impassioned in what they're doing. If you really love what you're doing, you're going to do a better job and you're just going to be happier. So I think it's tied into workforce development, training, but also doing a better job at letting people know what you can do, like, how many jobs we have in the city, and that they can actually see themselves in those roles.
Right. Councillor Regan?
I think those are all great comments, especially on the housing front. Going to take a little bit of a different approach here. Boston just needs to be a more fun city. It needs to be a city that is more inclusive, so that talent, especially talent of color, wants to stay here, right? How do we build past that barrier of Boston being an unwelcome, unfriendly racist city for talent of color? And it's a lot of work. You know, we're getting, appointing a nightlife chief who's going to really be looking at these issues. But a lot of people, a lot of my friends, will be like, okay, did my school here, but there's no way I'm staying here. Because I have other places I can go, like DC, like New York, that are much more welcoming and have a lot more different activities where I don't feel like I'm otherized. Where I feel like there are places where I can go and have a good time, and there's a community where I don't have to explain myself, where I don't always have to, you know, feel like I have to be so intentional about finding safe spaces for myself. I went to, you know, I grew up here in Mattapan and I went to Harvard. We had a party downtown that was for the Harvard Yale game. And so we rented out a nightclub. And we all got to the nightclub, and as soon as we got there, they claimed that there was an electrical fire. What really happened was, they thought that it was going to be a Harvard party, but they didn't know that it was of black students at Harvard, right? And through testimony before the Attorney General's Office, that was my first interaction with the city council, because I then came to city council and testified about my experience of discrimination on a panel about discrimination. When you, when that happens, none of those students want to stay in a city like Boston. Because they don't feel welcome. They don't feel like they can go somewhere after they've studied all day, after they've worked so hard, and just relax and hang out with people because, because they're black. And mind you, that shouldn't happen to anybody, whether they go to Harvard or not, whether they grew up in Mattapan and work at FedEx, or, you know, whether they're a doctor, right? And so how do we make sure that we are creating these spaces of fun and these gathering spots, which is why the liquor license work is so important? Which is why it's important to support, you know, organizations that are actually doing the work, like Boston, while black. And to support spaces for young entrepreneurs, young entrepreneurs of color, young workers of color, lawyers of color like myself, to feel like Boston can be a home for them. And so I think businesses also being, doing that work and thinking about, okay, we have talent, we're recruiting them, how do we make sure that we retain them? And so how are we also, how are businesses stepping up and making sure that Boston is a welcoming and friendly city at all?
Thank you. Councillor Coletta?
Yes, to housing, or making sure that we have affordable housing, yes to workforce development and training, yes to making sure that we're welcoming and inclusive of everybody and that we are a fun city. For those of you who don't know, Councillor Liu Zhen, she's extremely fun. And so I would listen to her on this. Follow me on Instagram. She's a good time. There's a DJ in the house, so I like the lot. But that's me. I'm a DJ here. Here's Chanel, we can watch her there, peace, sir. But find them on Instagram, too, DJ Real Peace. Everybody would be very likely to go with Councillor Liu Zhen at one point or another. But for me, and I'm surprised that it hasn't been brought up, but as, you know, the youngest councillor here and on the council, I would be remiss in saying, just pay your people better wages. I have an incredible burden of student loan debt because my family was just over the threshold for income requirements. So we, with this cliff effect, I had to take on a lot of student loans. When I was 18, I didn't really understand what that meant. So yeah, I just filled out my application yesterday, and that's available on whitehouse.gov. If you have student loans, be sure to do it. It took me five minutes. But the burden of just living and being and thriving is so, it's expensive. It's expensive to live here. I mean, housing right now is insane. Student loan debt, car payments, and wanting to go out and yeah, have avocado toast with my friends on Saturday here and there. I think we all deserve that sometimes.
And that's not the reason why people can't buy homes. Why people can't buy homes.
So there's all of these systemic issues, right? We need more affordable housing. We need to make sure that we have workforce development. But I think at the end of the day, just pay your people what they deserve, pay your young folks what they deserve.
Right.
Yes. Oh, no. That's funny. I agree with all what my colleagues have said, and also, just kind of double down in on what Councillor Liu Zhen has said, is, you know, creating some of our neighborhoods that have been under-invested into, you know, destination neighborhoods. I feel that, you know, across the city, we see where the investment has been and where it has not been, and making sure that we're, you know, flipping the script or just putting more incentives or, you know, putting more tax dollars into those neighborhoods to help retain, you know, our black and brown communities so that they want to stay. And also just, Councillor Murphy brought up our, cradle to career. I'm forgetting the name of it. Right, so it's making sure that we're establishing these cradle-to-career pipelines, that we're not just focusing on our young people, but also incorporating our grandparents, our parents. Because there's so many times that we're pouring into our young people, but they're going home, and sometimes that work is getting unraveled. So it's taking a look at the whole parent structure, the whole family structure, and pouring into that in order to help keep our communities here and making sure that they're seeing the reason why, that they're staying in Boston.
Great. Well, thank you all for making the time to be here today. Thank you for discussing the challenges that we face as a city, but also highlighting the opportunities for collaboration with the business community here in Boston. And we look forward to doing that with you all. We all have the same vision for this place to be, that we call home, to be a great, a great city. So look forward to collaborating. Please join me in thanking our folks. And I'll end where I began, which is with a commercial message for our next Government Affairs Forum on November 2nd. House Ways and Means Chair and Congressman Richard Neal will be with us, and hope to see you all then. Have a great rest of the day and thanks for spending time with us.
Thank you.